All right. Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Certainly. Board member Albritton?
Present.
Board member Jablonsky?
Here.
Board member Kozinski?
Here.
Vice Chair Hartman?
Here.
And Chair Bright Cruz?
Here. And this is actually the local planning agency that we're starting out with, not the council meeting yet. Let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you very much. We're very pleased to have Davie with us this evening. Fire, we got a quick local planning agency meeting we'll have first, and then we'll get into our regular council meeting.
And Mayor, there's only one item on the agenda, and if Russell reads it, then we can jump right to it for you.
Perfect, let's do it.
This is a resolution of the local planning agency of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recommending that the town council adopt the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2022 through 2026, and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, but with a correction. On page nine, we're showing the 2010 census. I think it needs to be 2020.
Right.
Is that correct? Would that be correct, Jeff? Page nine.
Number 10 on page nine says, analyze the 2010 census data and evaluate the comprehensive plan to reflect the new data.
So it should read 220? Jeff put that in there to see if I'd read it.
That's right.
He did it on purpose. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to make that change.
Yep, approve with that amendment?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Certainly. Board member Albritton?
Yes.
Board member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Board member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman?
Yes.
And Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
A motion to approve the minutes?
Oh, the minutes, sorry.
From the last LPA.
Yeah.
I make the motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Any additions, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none from the public, any additions, corrections? Seeing none, if you can please call the question, Russell.
Board member Albritton?
Yes.
Board member Jablonsky?
Yes.
Board member Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hartman?
Yes.
Chair Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. That meeting is adjourned. Okay. I'd like to call to order our regular council meeting for the evening. Russell, if you can please call the roll.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Councilmember Albritton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Here.
We have a question, Mayor.
Very good. If you'll please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We are very pleased to have Chief Downey with us this evening, and the Davie Fire Department leadership. And on the, we have the American Heart Association 2021 Award, and...
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. And I am going to turn it over to Assistant Chief George Gonzalez, who oversees EMS and training.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. It's my pleasure to inform you, Southwest Ranches has been recognized by the American Heart Association as was awarded the 2021 Gold Plus Award for Managing Cardiac Emergencies. This was the first year that American Heart Association allowed a joint agency application to be included with Davie Fire Rescue's nomination. The attached certificate recognizes the men and women of Southwest Ranches Fire Department and their commitment to jointly serve their community as part of an integrated EMS team with Davie Fire Rescue. Mission Lifeline is an American Heart Association national initiative to advance the system of care for patients with acute, high-risk, time-sensitive life and/or quality-of-life-threatening diseases states, such as STEMI's or heart attacks, more commonly known. The overarching goals of Mission Lifeline are to bring stakeholders together in a collaborative manner to reduce mortality morbidity for these patients while improving overall quality of care and patient outcomes. Mission Lifeline EMS recognizes in a program designed to showcase EMS services across the nation for excellent STEMI care. In short, time is muscle when it comes to the heart and heart attacks. So the collaboration with Davie, Southwest Ranches, and the other industry partners with the hospitals in the area, we've achieved the highest status for meeting the criteria and the guidelines and goals set forth by the American Heart Association. And with that, certificate to Southwest Ranches Fire Department for their Mission Lifeline EMS Gold Plus Award.
And we truly value the partnership that we have with Southwest Ranches and the Southwest Ranches Fire Department. I also wanted to let you know, last night at our council meeting, we had the state fire marshal's office come to our council meeting and presented us with a plaque and a letter. And I'm going to read just a little bit of the letter that we're very proud of. This letter is to advise you of your department's compliance with the Florida State statute 633.502 and Florida Administrative Code 69A-62, Fire Department Inspection Checklist, with Regional Safety Field Representative Jeff Strickland, which was performed on October 5th, 2021. Your department should be commended for being fully compliant with no discrepancies. The work and dedication of your personnel was evident in the preparation for the site visit. Your attention to the importance of safety at all levels within your department is to be commended. And we had the presentation from the state fire marshal's office last night. And he said that was the quickest evaluation that he has done yet, because all of our documentation was in order. And he presented us with our plaque for successful compliance inspection conducted by the state fire marshal's office. Safety section staff has determined your department is in compliance with the Florida Firefighters Occupational Safety and Health Act as outlined in the Florida State statutes. So we just wanted to advise you of that. Thank you. We wish you a happy Thanksgiving, happy holidays, please stay healthy, stay safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, I think we're, you know, just to add on to that, I think we're very fortunate to have such exceptional partners for both our fire and our police. Davie is a tremendous partner to our town. And really appreciate everything that you all do to keep our residents safe, keep them healthy, keep them protected, and really putting your lives on the line each day. So thank you for that. You are sincerely appreciated for all that you do. Thank you. I don't know if there's any, Chief Downey, we have you here. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments, anything while we've got, are we good?
Actually, one of the reasons we wanted to come out today is, let me speak into the microphone. We've made a significant investment in LPRs that we're going to be putting all over town. We have one in place today, and I'm sure you're aware of it. It's probably a good thing we don't know what's going on on the LPRs, because that's really police business. But, you know, with this kind of an investment, we want to make sure that we're properly using it. And we've gone through the laws, we've set up our own policies. But we don't know how you've implemented them. If an LPR has a hit, what happens then? I mean, is it dispatched to somebody? Does everybody get text messages whether they're working or not? Maybe somebody could kind of walk us through the process so that we have an understanding of... We've heard, we've read, we understand what they're supposed to do, but we'd like to know how you're going to use them.
Okay, very good. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, administrative staff, thanks. My name's Steve Kinsey, chief of Davie. I think we met virtually about a year ago. It's good to see everybody in person. To answer those questions, because I'm not an expert, I have a rudimentary knowledge of LPRs and their usage. But I did bring along Lieutenant Steve Bart, who has been doing the program for the Davie Police Department. So I'm going to let him take the microphone and answer any of the questions you all have for him.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. So there's different uses for the LPR. We have the patrol use, where those who are signed on can get set alerts for their area and for specific things that come up. For example, they can set it for felony vehicle, stolen vehicle, stolen license plate. They can set it up for minute things, like suspended license, but that becomes tedious. It just doesn't stop, and it's instant. As soon as the car passes through, maybe it's a five-second delay. By the time it gets to the server and comes out, they'll get an alert. I actually keep one on my office, just in case, you know, something big comes out. But I turned off all those suspended licenses and lost tags, because it just wouldn't stop with all the LPRs that are in the city. Now, the other side is the investigative piece, which is really benefits you guys too. Because if there's a stolen car that comes through, or there's a trend, or a detective develops a lead for a specific car, even a partial tag, they can plug that information in into the system. And if that car, because most crimes occur with stolen vehicles, you know, somebody breaks into a house, chances are they're driving a stolen vehicle or something stolen. It happens all the time, where they steal a vehicle while breaking in. But they'll be able to track that vehicle, and they'll be like, hey, this car's coming into the ranches. And they'll be able to follow it and then, you know, develop leads to get the big pictures to stop the whole, all burglaries. So that, there's two different aspects to it, the instant and the investigative.
So let's talk about the patrol side for a minute. We put some policies, we don't want to be pulling somebody over if they've got, you know, an expired tag. I mean, that makes no sense. I'm not sure if you've been furnished our policies so that the LPR can be set up properly. And if we have or haven't, maybe somebody can report back to us whether it's configured properly and the new ones that we're going to be getting over.
The policies you're talking about?
Our policies.
I'd be more than happy to look at it.
Perfect, perfect. Let's talk a little bit about accountability, too, because, I mean, when you make a significant investment, you want to make sure people are using it. How do you enforce your team using the devices so that you know that, you know, they're not... I don't want to say ignoring it, but it's not their highest priority?
Well, I check it every month to see what's going on, see who's on it, who hasn't been active. And I'll send them an email, hey, what's going on? Also, our LPRs in our city move around all the time. We have portables. Yours is strictly, you know, will be at the entrances or exits to the city. So it depends. It depends on what's going on during the day. If something comes out and they're tied up on something, it's hard to, like, really manage that. But...
Discretion's a big part of it, I understand that.
Huge, huge.
But, you know, if you're going to be, if somebody's going to be supervising it, that's the important part. Because again, we won't know. We shouldn't know. We should have no access to that sort of technology.
Right. Well, we have implemented that any kind of paperwork that's generated from an LPR hit has to be reported. So it's a metric, so we can measure, you know, hey, what are we getting out of it?
Right. So will you guys incorporate those same metrics and report back to us as well?
Absolutely. Anything that's going to come from, if you want that, we have no problem. The analysts, I'm sure, can put that information together for your report. I'm sure the analysts put together a report for you guys.
What do you guys think? Any strong opinions, one way or the other?
Yeah, no, I think you bring up a great point, Bob. I would love to see, you know, we get a weekly report for crime. I would love to see, and I'm not looking for detail, but, you know, a summary of kind of the breakdown of what all the hits are, and just so we kind of have an idea of what's happening in town.
I did send something a while ago, like a pie chart regarding the hits and stuff like that.
Yeah, 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 that would be great. I don't know, is weekly a possibility?
I could check with the analysts. They're the one...
Yeah, let us check with the analysts, but it probably is. It's not, at the very least, monthly.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we can hear this to how the parameters that you guys put on.
Yeah.
However you want that done, we'll get those reports to you.
Right. If we can get, you know, whatever makes sense, I'm fine with. But weekly would be nice, so we could match it up actually to the other crime report.
We would hit the highlights. I mean, obviously, we wouldn't try to give you a report of 400 LPR hits, again, things that we wouldn't even...
Yeah.
Maybe like part one crimes, you know, stolen vehicles, stolen cars. You don't want to know, like, suspended license, you know. And we should emphasize, we don't sandbag them for suspended license. Like, some officers are really good. They'll stand, sit by the LPR and wait for that hot car to come through on State Road 7, and they'll go get them.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing wrong with that.
And just so you know, the data is also, the reason we picked this system is because it surrounds our cities. Everybody who is on this system surrounds us. So like Pembroke Pines is on this system. We can get hits from them, from anything that happened in their city and is coming this way, we'll know if they enter it. Same with our suspect cars. We can track them all over the county. Anybody who's on the system and they pass through an LPR, we can track them. And that's really where the rubber hits the road, as far as, like, investigative. Because, you know, we can get the small guy, but we really want the big picture, the big guy. You know, the rings and stuff like that, what cars they're using, where they're going throughout the county. We're at that level now. So that benefits you tremendously, because if that, if a car that's not entered by us, but say it's entered by Sunrise, and they come in your city, we're going to know about it. And Sunrise is going to know about it.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay, good, good. Now, as far as training is concerned, I'm assuming that all your officers are trained on how to use the technology, both from a policing standpoint and an investigation standpoint?
Well, the investigators and the police have two different access. Where I don't, we don't let our patrol officers enter hot plates, enter information. They're strictly reactive. Whereas detectives, they're the ones who are looking for certain cars. They're the ones who are going to put that information in.
Okay, I understand the difference. Thank you.
Sure.
Good, good. And that would just be Jeff in our town, right?
Yeah. Jeff should be able to know how to do it. If not, he can make a phone call, and we'll walk him through anything.
We'll train him up.
Yes.
Yeah, perfect.
Plus the vendor...
You hear that, Jeff?
Coming your way. We just signed you up for training. Don't worry about it, but we're going to train you.
The vendor has been outstanding. Anything that we need, training-wise, they're very flexible. They'll come out, they'll talk us through it on the phone, they'll do a Zoom call. They're very proactive in helping us out. I do know that we did get something out of the cameras that you got a couple of months ago. I think it's from when the car went through.
Yep.
So...
They got on 75 too fast, though, unfortunately, from what I recall.
Oh, they ran?
Yeah.
But I think we did make an arrest. Jeff, we made an arrest out there, right?
No, we got two. One, we made an arrest, and the other one, it's South, I don't know.
Good. Yeah, that's great.
That's all I have. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
Yeah.
Chief Kinsey, first of all, I want to thank you, thank your department. I'm getting a lot of praise from all the neighbors in the town, and what a diligent job that your department is doing in enforcing the speed issues in our town.
I appreciate that. They get all the credit. Unfortunately, I'm not writing speeding tickets for my office, but they do get the credit for doing that.
You get the pat on the back, all right?
I'll pass that on.
All right. I did get a contact recently from a neighbor over on 185th and 186th area about, I guess, excessive speeding in that area. And the people are driving around the speed bumps. And that's the way it was put to me. And I plan to go out there sometime in December and talk to the resident that was complaining to me. But I did want to make sure that when I report to him, that I will say that I spoke with you about that.
Absolutely, I just wrote it down. And I remember from our virtual call, too, one of the complaints was the guys were kind of staying out on the perimeter, you know, and doing a lot of good traffic enforcement on Sterling and on Griffin, but not necessarily the neighborhoods. So I had asked them to spend more time enforcing that 25 mile an hour speed limit in the neighborhoods. I know that we have residents that have allowed us to park in their parking driveways, which is very helpful for us to stay out of the road, to kind of stay hidden a little bit. Not like we're trying to be the secret police, but sometimes that's an easier way to catch those speeders and get the point across that 25 is 25. So we'll keep doing that as well.
25 is 25.
Yes, sir.
I, thank you. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Perfect, perfect. Great, thank you, Bo. All right. Thank you all again for coming out. Really appreciate it. All right. Public comment?
Mayor, we only have one speaker tonight, and that's Noel Hollingsworth.
Good evening, Noel Hollingsworth. I only had one thing to talk about until the chief got up and spoke. On these cameras that we're installing, is it possible also to find out the hits per camera? Because there could be hotspots where a camera is getting a lot of good hits. And if the council knows about that, then they can also do something about it. So...
The answer is yes.
While we're having the, what?
The answer is yes. I asked that question when we were setting up.
Okay. What is the answer? Yes or no?
It's yes.
Okay. Okay, the second thing was about the roads. We're 199th and 202. 196th is getting their roads redone. And there's been a lot of questions that have come my way, because I always show up here. And they think that I know everything, which I don't. And that is that question was, what are they doing? Why are they digging up all this? What are they doing this? Where is that? So I think that there needs to be a little bit more communication in the future to the future residents that are going to have their roads refinished and the drainage that's going to be put in, et cetera, as to what the... Things that are going to be done, the ramifications, the timeframe, that sort of stuff. And we got, the swales all scraped out. And they're starting to put in some drainage over on 202. And people are wondering about that. And there's also this giant pile of dirt at the front of 199th from all the scrapings. And they were going, what are they going to do with that?
I have an answer if you'll wait.
Okay. One thing was, dirt is important in Southwest Ranches. That's what people kept telling me. And one, some were very upset that they took their dirt away instead of letting them have it, because it was already on their property, they said. Even though 199th, the swales belong to the town. They don't belong to the residents with an easement. So they want to make sure that that dirt stays in Southwest Ranches and is put to a good use, preferably in a park. So if you could address that, it would be appreciated. And I want to thank the chief for coming out tonight, and the other officers that were here, and everybody else. And everyone have a good Thanksgiving, National Turkey Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel.
Mayor, no further public comment. Perfect, thank you. Rod, I wonder if I might ask you to come up and just speak to some of the elements that Noel brought up? The communication piece, how we normally communicate, and kind of what we do with that dirt?
Yes, yes, Mayor. So the dirt itself, there's a couple of different options that we're looking at possibly reusing it somewhere. Traditionally, when we get a contractor that comes in and bids a project, they put in the cost to haul that dirt off somewhere else. Oftentimes, it's not necessarily super clean, but it can be. So in this particular case, I think there's an avenue for us to be able to reuse it somewhere. So we're exercising that and trying to see if there's an area where we can do that. As far as communication goes, we typically send out mailers. It's my understanding that when we sent out mailers, there was a significant delay in the time. One of the benefits that we've had from this contractor is when we had our pre-con meeting, typically there's like two to three, and sometimes even more, weeks and sometimes more time for a contractor to actually mobilize and start working. In this particular case, the contractor was ready that next week. So we didn't really, because it's a surtax-driven thing, we didn't want to tell them not to work. So we tried to cram all that information as quickly as we could. We sent all the information out. And I think the mailers just came in basically that day or a day before, something like that. So we always send out mailers, though, that's our process. We like to put out the message board as well. I think it was being used for other uses, but typically that's what we do. A big social blast on our social media platforms, and we do the mailers.
Are we still, I know we used to, and I know attendance was really poor at them, but we used to have a meeting here at Town Hall in person where we'd invite folks out just to kind of ask questions and things like that as well. The other thing that was good about that was if there was any areas on there that were still private, that would give them the option of possibly participating at a cost. Are we still doing that, or is that COVID?
This time, we did not do that. Our schedule was a lot more accelerated, but it's obviously, it's a thing that we would continue and want to do in the future.
Good.
In these two particular sections also, that we didn't have the same situations like we had when we did the eastern sections by Appaloosa, where we had 128th was private. We had 52nd, I think, had a section or something like that that was private. The uniqueness of this, though, is that surtax won't fund those. So, yeah, we didn't have the ability this particular time to offer that to our residents, because whereas when we have our own general fund money to do it, we can basically get them to get the road ready with the base and everything for us. You know, like, we talked about that, that improvement that they have to make. In this particular case, because it's surtax, we couldn't do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, good, good, thank you. All right. Councilmember comments?
I'll go.
Or, I'm sorry, board reports, sorry.
I'll go for that, too.
Is there any board reports?
All right, George.
Good evening, council mayor, vice mayor. On behalf of the Drainage Board, we had a meeting just last night, the other night. We have four capital projects we're working on, two Tis Door. Some of the projects we're working on now are 182nd Surtax, the 202nd Drainage Project. We're working on pipes and swales. Our guard rail project on Hancock is underway. And our Green Meadows Drainage on 163rd, 164th is in progress there. Last night, we were discussing some things with the contractor and placement of tubes and potential some damage that may have occurred. We're looking into that. One note I want to make on our December 2021 meeting was canceled due to the proximity of the holidays, so we will not be having our meeting in December. I know you guys are bummed. And also, all our board members will be serving again next year. So there's no, you know, that's something for you guys to consider, that all of us want to reserve. One thing I do want to announce in advance, in January, we've invited the South Broward Drainage District head there and the central to attend one of our meetings to discuss how they operate and answers and questions, et cetera, for our board members, and not only our board members, but the public as well will be invited. So please come out, and if you have any questions regarding flooding, drainage, et cetera, that night would be the chance to talk directly with those officials. That being said and done, I would like to thank Rod for his participation in our board. He's done an excellent job, always constantly providing us information and being there for us. So thank you, Rod, I appreciate it. And councilmen for coming out to all the meetings, I really appreciate that. So that's my board report. If I may, just take a little opportunity here to switch regarding the Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation, if I may make a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. With regards to the Southwest Ranches Parks Foundation, we're in the middle of planning for a carnival. The carnival, you know, we're planning hard to try and get it accomplished on Martin Luther King Weekend, starting the 14th to the 17th. Just to give a little bit of information, we would set up, the carnival would come into town. It would be there Thursday. Potential hours of operation, just to put a little bit of information out there in the public, would be Thursday from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. Friday, 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. Saturday, 1:00 to 11:00 p.m. And Sunday, 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. Those are the potential hours, subject to change. By Monday, which would be the Martin Luther King Day, would be cleaning up, breaking down. So I know there's a lot of planning to do. We're working with the fire, we're working with the police, we're working with different logistics. I've met with the attorney, the town attorney. I've been discussing with Andy. So we're short on time, it's coming up rapidly. We have the holidays in front of us, but it's something we're trying to do. We're trying to put on a country fair so the public can know. It would be on the corner of Dykes and Griffin, in that five-acre parcel there. There's been some fill that was placed there that was donated by a town member. And tomorrow, you may see a bulldozer being out there to come out there and try and grade the property. We do have a fill permit. We're going to go out there and we're going to grade, we're going to fill in the low spots, kind of cut the high spots, and try and make that field usable for other events, not just the Southwest Ranches Park Foundation. And see how that goes. So that's sort of the, some of the preliminary plans coming up in the future, and looking forward to that, and hope everybody would come out and participate. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you, George. Appreciate the updates. All right.
My turn? Hey. Thank you, Mayor.
One more board.
Oh, yeah, one more board.
Oh, no.
Not yet, sorry.
I'm sure Gary has. On behalf of the Education Advisory Board, I just wanted to make sure everyone is aware of, invite everyone out to the Cow Pie Bingo Festival that's being put on by West Broward, um, High School in their efforts to build a stadium, the vet program, and then the Education Advisory Board in the town. It's there, it's going to be held at the Southwest Ranches Equestrian Park. It's this Saturday. It's, um, when?
Eleven to six.
Eleven to six. And so there's the Cow Pie Bingo. If you want to purchase your bingo scores ahead of time, you can go onto the webs, uh, the town's website. There's a link that can get you there. There's also Cornhole Festival, um, Tournament, Pet Costume Parade. So it should be a lot of fun and this is, I mean, this is something that my, my, my oldest daughter was the first freshman class of that high school and they've been wanting, they've been needing a football stadium for so long. And this is just a great event and, you know, for the football team, the award-winning performance ensemble and just for the whole high school. So just for the whole community, if you can come out, I'm sure it's going to be lots of fun. Thanks.
Yes. Great. Great. Thank you, Debbie. Yeah, I think it's going to be a great event and really important.
A question. I had a question.
Yeah, Debbie.
Debbie, question. I understand there's going to be a, um, pet costume parade.
Yes, there is. And there is a wonderful judge. Who's going to be judging that. But that should be lots of fun.
All right. So I hope, I hope the folks come out to that.
Yeah, and petting zoo also.
And a petting zoo.
Debbie's.
And goat yoga too. Goat yoga as well.
Just a quick question. Is there any kind of a schedule? Because we're only able to make it for a certain period of time Saturday.
I, I don't know the schedule.
Okay.
It might be on the website though, if you go out there. I know.
I'm looking.
I think on the Cow Pie Bingo.
Right.
There was a certain time in the morning where they're gonna do some kind of, it's random, I think, where they're going to pick the numbers. So for the tickets that you purchase, they're, they're going to randomly pick numbers for each person that's bought a ticket and. I kind of had to look up how Cow Pie Bingo was played, but, uh.
Are you having to live?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think if for no other reason than to find out what, uh, Cow Pie Bingo is, everybody needs to come out and experience that firsthand.
Yep.
Awesome. All right. Wait a minute.
Are we sure?
I think we're good, Gary. It's all yours.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody for coming. Few announcements and I got a couple items I want to go over. I'll try not to take up, or to be too long-winded. We have the Country Estates Park Entrance Contest on designing that. We've extended that now to January 15th. We have the Car Show and Chili Fest for, uh, that, um, George mentioned on the 4th of December from 10:00 to 4:00 p.m. The Rural Arts Committee has the Holiday Lights Contest up. The entries have got to be in by the 3rd of, uh, December. Just some items of note, uh, the DMV has been canceled for November. The Philomobile, we don't know the status yet on, uh, December, when that's coming back. Ms. Green mentioned the Cow Pie Bingo, so I won't go into that. I have in the newsletter coming out in December, the, uh, instructions for the tutorial on the website on how to get a Level 1 fill permit. So that'll be coming out for that. One of the really, uh, one of the really great things about our town is everybody who donates their time and, and does, does so many things for the town. And I'm going to toot one of the council member's horns because he's never going to do it for himself. So I'm going to do it for him.
Good.
And that's for Bob.
Good.
And he, if you go right outside next to, uh, the council chambers, there's a fantastic photo of, uh, first responders and a plaque area. Bob did all that on his own. He set it up. He organized it in conjunction with the Rural Arts Board. And took the pictures, uh, spent hours with the drone and, uh, I can't thank him enough for it. He did an outstanding, a yeoman's job where he just did everything from A to Z. Basically, I held his camera strap for about two minutes and that was about it. Bob, thank you. You, you, you did, you know, you did an outstanding job.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. And like I said, I know you're not going to toot your own horn, but I'm going to do it for you.
Thank you.
So, and, you know, and I don't know if people realize this, how much time Bob spends with his camera at all our events. I leave mine at home. I don't bother. Cause I know Bob's going to have it. He's got it. It's, it's, it's really fantastic, you know? And so we all contribute in our own, in our own ways and, and Bob just goes above and beyond. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
One of the other things I wanted to talk about was, um, we have a problem, as you all know, who have been at the, uh, uh, Parks Board, that we allocated, uh, five areas or five construction projects within the parks. And one of them is not panning out and that, and we were all at that same meeting, but I want to inform the public. And that was, we were going to add another layer of soil to the ball field at Country Estates Park and that's not working out. And, uh, some of the council members are going to be probably, uh, putting down some seed and volunteer hours in their own time that, that, uh, once again, that, um, Ms. December has, uh, gotten donated for us and all of that. But we budgeted about $31,000, $32,000 for that. I would like to, Russell, if you could pull that picture up, I would like to repurpose that for that park in two, in two areas. And there's a picture I was, uh, as soon as Russell can put it up. And right here, I was, I was out there today walking the park. This is the fence along 199th.
West fence.
It's a thousand feet long. I would like to, to authorize Andy for the council to authorize Andy to switch to, to have that match the front on Long Griffin Road. I know we're working, going to be working on the front entrance and the, I mean, the entranceway and the game and the gate area. So that'd be exclusive of that. But all that rusted Bob wire, that goes for like a thousand feet. And I'd like, I'd like to, you know, for us to give Andy the high sign. I know it's not going to take all $32,000 or whatever the going rate is for that. And by the way, the fence in the back, I looked at that. That looked, that would like, it looked in okay shape. Yeah. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wasn't any Bob wire or anything like that. We have no funds dedicated to the front entrance of the park for that contest. Once we decide, once we get a design in place. So I would like to take whatever the balance of that money is and dedicate it to that. And then we'll add to that or we'll, you know, figure out something further. But I would like the, the resource to be used for that. And I'd like you guys to chime in, like shake your heads, let Andy know.
Great idea.
Yeah, you know, or something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I think that would be worthwhile because it was going to be spent there anyway. But now we, you know, that, that project stalled.
Do we need a motion for that or just direct Andy to?
Andy, you want to motion or you want to?
No, I, I'm okay with consensus because if it exceeds a certain dollar amount, I'm going to come back to you all anyway. So I'll keep you posted on the process, but it appears certainly clear consensus to move forward with this. So thank you.
Yeah, I think it would look, I mean, it, it looks bad. You know, you guys have all seen it and it, and we have the funds available. Thank you. Thank you, Russell, very much. The other thing is, and, uh, Noel must have read my mind for about the last five days. I've been talking to Andy about this big pile of dirt that I keep passing way out off of 190, uh, 1, 199th. And I started noticing it as it started getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And I said, hey, where's it all going? And he wasn't really sure. So we did some digging and literally and figuratively. And, uh, we, we found out it really doesn't have a home. And so I said, well, can we put it in, I thought of the, uh, Green Meadow Sanctuary. But then I realized we could probably put it in Country Estates.
Yeah, what about?
Yeah. And so, um, we've kind of moved in that direction now where we're going to take, there's like 20, 25 truckloads there. I don't know if you guys have looked by it, looked at it lately. No, I looked at it yesterday and it was, it was, I mean, the, the, the back hose about 10 feet up in the air on top of it scooping down.
This is on 75 and Griffin?
No.
No, this is.
This is 199th, 199th and Griffin.
Wow.
Yeah.
I've been asked it a bunch of times.
Yeah, it's, it's, and so my idea was to take the, um, dirt from there and I'll have the contractor just send it out to one of our parks in a designated area with a big spray painted X on it and dump it all in soil bank it. Cause we know we're going to need it.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we're going to need it in one of those parks. We're going to need it at Green Meadow Sanctuary whenever we get going or what have you. And I wanted to take it one step further, thinking that as we move forward with the Tisdor projects, we, because we still have a many years to go on that. And we're going to probably come across these situations that we automatically move that as part of the contract into the parks. I mean, you know, within, uh, reason, obviously, if it's something that we don't want. But, um, that we put them in the parks for utilization, uh, Green Meadows is going to take a lot of work. And that, and we've, haven't spent very much on that, you know, Frontier Trail is going to take some work. And, uh, the ball field, you know, we may be able to do that just through the excess soil, you know, that comes away from the Tisdor project. But we have that in the plan. So we would utilize it. Cause I would really, really hate to, at some day where we get the parks developed and I'm thinking maybe three years from now where we suddenly discover that we gave away all the soil. Now we got to buy it, buy it, you know?
Twice the price.
You know, yeah. So if we've got it here as a resource, it's a byproduct, let's put it over there. I can live with a mound of dirt in the back of the, back of a park until we figure out.
Yeah. But I wonder, is, is it possible to spread that at, uh, the fishing hole, Country State Fishing Hole Park before we do the seeding? I mean.
I can't see why not.
Yeah, I would think that would be a good combination use there.
I, I don't disagree with that at all. I'd, I'd, I'd have it in there tomorrow if it was, you know, entirely up to me. I wanted to wait for this meeting.
I mean, it just seems like the timing is perfect.
That's absolutely where we're headed.
Yeah, I, yeah, I wanted.
That's what you were already thinking?
Yeah. Yeah, we talked, we talked about it, but I wanted, I didn't want to do anything until we spoke up here. And everybody had full knowledge of it and gave Andy, gave Andy the, uh, you know, the go-ahead. Good. So, okay, two birds, one stone. Got it. Entranceway and, okay. Please bear with me for one second. I don't want to, don't want to leave anything out because we're not going to meet for a whole month, so.
And I might cut you off at any point in time.
You never know. You never know. I know I'm so long-winded all the time. Oh, and okay, I think I, I think I checked all the boxes off. And I do have one Florida fun fact for today. Does anybody know where the highest point in Florida is? It's Britton Hill, as in Albritton, but leave off the all. Britton Hill in Walton County on the.
Walton County.
Walton County, right up, and it's, uh, it's.
How tall is it?
Uh, 300, uh, 345 feet.
Nice.
And it's, it's right on the Alabama, uh, Florida border, right in there on the north, you know, sort of west, uh, east, west of, uh, Mariana in that area.
That's our, our.
And here's the funny one. Uh, or not funny one, but, um, does anybody know where the lowest point is in the state of Florida?
My backyard?
You're close. No, I actually went and researched it and I, and the answer just, it just cracked me up. The beach.
There you go.
It was kind of funny.
That's great.
Anyway, that's it, Mayor. That's all I got.
Perfect. Good. Thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. We'd like to go next.
Let me go ahead and knock something out here. David Kaczynski, District 4. Um, let me begin my comments. And, uh, a couple of weeks ago at the Country Estates, um, Homeowner Association Meeting. Gary, I, I neglected to give you, uh, credit for the, um, the fill permit during my comments. And, um, I did not mean to step on your toes during that meeting. And I just, um, I, I, at that time, I should have given you credit for it. That is something you've worked very hard on. And, um, I thank you so, so much for that. So, um.
Thank you, Dave.
I didn't mean to step on your toes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Number two, um, tonight marks the, um, one-year anniversary that, um, our, our mayor and, uh, council member Albritton and myself were, um, sworn into office. So it's, 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 it's great that it's just like on a meeting night and it was the actual day. Mayor, you, you've done a good job in leading, uh, leading us.
This is an amazing council. I really feel like we're moving in the right direction and all together. So it's a pleasure serving with you all and it's been a great year.
I want to thank Davie Police. Um, you know, recently you guys went out, um, hidden, uh, sat out in the driveway, uh, by Jimbo Stark Weathers on Lou Ray. Got 17 tickets, 11 warnings. And, um, I, I don't know how many are watching tonight, but, um, I know they're sitting on the, uh, end of Hollatee near, uh, Lou Ray in a, a little driveway over there. I was told about that today. So, um, they got a couple of them when I checked in. Since we're moving into the holiday season, um, I've received a few invites. So I know that there's going to be in, uh, parties around the town. I'd like to ask the neighbors to be a little more, uh, relaxed in, uh, reporting these parties because, you know, we're getting together for the holiday season. And, um, you know, we're here for spreading good cheer and just like to ask to be a little more lenient in, uh, reporting, uh, the parties. We're all having fun. And, uh, announced that, uh, my appointment to the Public Safety Committee, that, uh, council member Albritton, has, uh, and his, uh, idea was, will be Ed Gonzalez. And I am intending to, uh, reappoint, um, all of my, uh, appointees to all the advisory boards. So, um, that, uh, kind of wraps it up for me. Uh, I'll see you in December.
Sounds good. Thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be very brief.
All right.
I was told that I didn't have to stand up, so it's very difficult for me. You've got to remember for 18 years I did that every time I spoke. So I will try this tonight. If I get antsy, I'll stand up. So bear with me. But, uh, very brief, is the traffic, uh, the Public Safety and Traffic Committee is starting in January. I would urge all of the residents that are currently looking in and those here, if you're interested in serving on that committee, fill out a, an application, uh, so we can look them over. Speaking to everybody, whenever I was elected, everybody spoke about traffic. I mean, I'd be absolutely thrilled to see 200 applications come in for people that like to serve on that board. I mean, that'd be a fantastic thing for me. That means the community's still interested, you know? I think we're going to do a good thing. I think working with the Davie Police Department, I think it'll be an excellent, excellent thing. And I want to thank the town for, uh, you know, for allowing me to do this. Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that. Appreciate it.
Good evening, folks. Um, just to add on to, uh, the one-year celebration of this new council. I did a little, uh, once a quarter or so, I write an article for the, uh, DRW Magazine, uh, a couple of us do. And I wanted to go back and look at the things that this council has accomplished over the last year. And I'm not going to, I'm, I'm kind of teasing you with what's out there. But, uh, there's a number of very specific ordinances we put in place over the last year that are designed explicitly to preserve our rural lifestyle. I, I, I reviewed all the ordinances that we passed and I also looked back over the last 10 years or so to see what was done in the last 10 years because, I mean, you know, there's been a lot of good ideas over the years. There's one here and one there over the last 10 years. Most of the things that, uh, legislatively were put in place, were put in place in the first five years. We inherited a lot from the county and that's more or less when we did a lot of our tweaking. But in this last year, I believe we passed seven ordinances to protect our rural lifestyle. So these guys, and, and I believe Gary and I also ran on the concept of keeping us rural, protecting the lifestyle, you know, keeping things the way that we want them. And, uh, this council's really delivered on it. So take a few minutes and, and read the article in Davie and the Ranches. The next thing I wanted to bring up is, and this is something that, uh, we're all confronted with. It's, it's raining outside right now and that's, that's the, the water and, and the flow and our drainage in our town. We have, for those who don't know, we have two different drainage districts that provide our secondary drainage into Griffin Road Canal. And they're based on different concepts. They're, uh, they're, um, they work together, but, uh, and they work with the town, but a lot of the builders and developers and, and just homeowners don't necessarily understand their rules. And what the town is doing, basically starting the 1st of December is our own master, stormwater master plan. Rod is working with consultants to go out and put together a comprehensive plan across town. Obviously it'll stay in line with South Florida Water Management and it will stay in line with the two, uh, drainage districts that we live within. But it'll be a lot easier when this is finished. If you need to make some improvements to your property or a piece of property is being developed to thoroughly understand our drainage requirements so that we can stay consistent going forward. You know, the, they all have to sign off if a, if a house is built or if you do certain elements of, uh, development on your property. But it's not always consistent in terms of implementation. This is going to try to make things far more consistent. And I believe Emily got us the money for that on, on grants. So this is, uh, this is a good thing for our town. We've been talking about it for years, but we could never get the money. It's, it's not cheap. I think it was, uh, we've got a quarter of a million dollars to get the job done. So this is, uh, this is a part of the long-term for the town. It'll take about two years to put this study together because there's a lot of work that goes into it. But when we're done, we'll have a consistent drainage plan for the. goes into it, but when we're done, we'll have a consistent drainage plan for the entire town. That was the first item. Most of the things I really wanted to talk about, cow pie bingo. I've done that before. But what I did want to bring up is every year, the Rural Public Arts and Design Board puts a calendar together and they're out now, they're out for sale. They make wonderful Christmas presents. They're very economical, they're only five dollars apiece. I give them, my wife wanted a ring last year, she got a calendar. You know how much money I saved? Everybody gets these, no matter what they ask for, they get a calendar. But I believe you can get them at the front desk, they're five dollars and I've been buying them since they came out, since we started this. They're great. They show some great photography from the residents of our town. So I'll have them there, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Also, just one, one quick thing, Bob's been the Vice Mayor this past year and I know I've been out a couple of meetings and I appreciate you stepping in for me and taking over those responsibilities while I was out too.
It's been a pleasure.
Good job. Yeah, thank you. I wanted to, just a couple of things. You know, we, a lot of times when we go to the different HOA meetings, we talk about crime and things that are going on and different elements, it comes up a fair amount of time. We talk about, you know, the mail, we talk about the cars, not, you know, fobs being in the cars and things like that and kind of getting the word out. And, and it seems like, well, I do think we're making progress, it seems like this still goes on and on and on as much as we talk about it. So we're trying, I want to try something in addition to that, not different, but in addition to that, and I was talking to Andy about putting certain excerpts out of the crime report that we get, you know, on a regular basis, just, just insert those into the rancher so that residents can see firsthand that, you know, is although we live in a very safe community, if we let our guard down, you know, things start disappearing and, you know, things are not necessarily the way we'd want it to be. So I thought this evening I would, I just wanted to kind of kick that off and talk a little bit. I'm just going to go through the last weekly, I'm not going to go read through the whole thing, but a few, pick out a few items here, things that are going on, because I'm not sure people kind of realize the, you know, things going on. There's, there was a couple of noise items going on. David, I appreciate your comments, especially this time of year. You know, I think it comes down to being respectful for our neighbors. We want to, we want to enjoy the holidays, everybody wants to enjoy the holidays, but if a neighbor has a problem, you know, hopefully we can work that out neighbor to neighbor without involving police. A couple of other things here, you know, there was a, one is an attempted theft of a construction equipment that was on a vacant piece of land, you know, if they're, if, if you've got a piece of equipment, you know, don't just leave it out empty, you know, on a piece of land thinking it's just going to stay there forever, you know, it's kind of like, I, I had a friend of mine many, many years ago, we were talking about locks in your cars and, and they said, you know, what it does is it keeps honest people honest. Well, this is the same kind of thing. If you just leave something of value on a piece of land, you know, we're not going to keep honest people honest. It's going to disappear. Attempted burglary here where a resident heard their alarm went off, they thought it might be an animal, they went out there and looked in the yard and actually saw somebody out there, you know, called 911 and got the police out there right away. The person ran away, but you know, this stuff goes on. Like I say, let's, let's be vigilant, let's be careful. We've got mail theft, we've talked about that, one of those occurred that week. We've got, this is an interesting one, I actually had a similar experience to this a couple of years back with tree trimming, but in this case, a resident called about a report, somebody was in their, was in her yard, asked and turns out this was a vendor that does pavement, you know, does paving, and they came to a deal to put in a certain amount of size of a patio in the backyard. Well then, after, and came to agree upon price, well, then the individual put in something that was about twice that size and wanted to charge five times as much money for it, you know, one of those kind of bait and switch type things. So once again, you know, if, if somebody does something like, if, if you see somebody that is going to come and do a deal and just have, you know, check them out, you know, make sure that they're legit, make sure they have a license, make sure that they are a legitimate business individual before we go into those things. It's those kind of things that, you know, that, that we just kind of forget can happen in the ranches. So we're going to try and communicate those a little bit better and get that word out a little bit more. We just, we live in a very safe community, but sometimes it's so safe that we let our guard down and, and we let things happen that probably should not happen or, or could be, could be stopped. The last thing I wanted to do in my comments, a couple of weeks ago, my mom passed away and the outpouring of support and love and comfort that came from this town to me personally and my family is something that sincerely touched me very deeply. And I just wanted to take a moment and thank everybody for that publicly. This is a wonderful place and that's never an easy time, but you all made it, made it better, made it more special and, and I, from the bottom of my heart, I sincerely appreciate all that, all that was expressed. Thank you very much. All right. Legal comments.
Mayor, again, sorry for your loss.
Yeah.
And to your family. Congratulations to this council on its one-year anniversary by virtue of the four residents in the audience and two on TV. Clearly something's working, so congratulations to everyone. In litigation news, just so you all, the public knows, I sent it to the council, a resident sued us, I think, last week for a home business that they wanted to run under the new law, trying to claim that they can convert their entire house but a bedroom into a kennel, and they sued us. Again, when this comes out, we didn't sue them. They sued us, so we're defending that item. In addition to that, Jeff and I have been working diligently with Councilmember Jablonsky concerning the plating item, the plat ordinance, the rewrite on the, on that. We all, I think, anticipate that coming forward on the December agenda for your review and consideration. It will be almost identical to the version that the council discussed openly, but we have maybe one caveat that we're going to suggest for your consideration at that time, but Councilmember Jablonsky will present the item at that point. Other than that, Mayor, I hope everyone has a happy holiday and no further legal comment.
Thank you, Keith, appreciate that. Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll, I'll be equally brief. Last week, I emailed all of you to, to make you aware that the town was the recipient of a firefighter assistance grant to the tune of about forty-six thousand dollars to buy the self-contained breathing apparatus that comes with no match. We've got thirty days for you all to accept that and, and so this, the package didn't hit us in time to be agendized for, for tonight's meeting. We're going to bring that back in a more formal nature at the next meeting, but I did want to get consensus from all of you that you're willing to accept a forty-six thousand dollar grant with no match.
I think we can, I think we can agree possibly on that.
I, I had a feeling you might be okay with that, but I, but I did want to get that on the record and I want to thank you for that. The other item I have, I'm going to turn it over to Russell. As you all know, this town, Sunshine Ranches HOA and, and the council have been in opposition of the turn lane that was originally proposed for the intersection of Sheridan and Volunteer. And so we've passed a resolution in opposition to that, we've passed that on to the county. Davie, a little bit late to the table, wasn't sure if they were going to oppose it or they were in favor of it, they were meeting with their HOAs, they had, they circled back to meet with their HOAs last night. Russell was able to attend that meeting, I'm sorry, Tuesday night, Russell was able to attend that because I was not, and I wanted to let him just kind of give you an update on, on what happened during that meeting.
Perfect.
So Russell, if you want to take it from there, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Yes, Mayor and Council, just wanted to give you a brief update on that meeting that we had at, or Davie had, I should say, at the Ivanhoe Community Center that I attended. They had representatives from seven different homeowners associations representing the various Ivanhoe neighborhoods and basically they discussed the original proposal, the existing conditions there and a new proposal that's, that's come out that I do want to share with you. Sorry, this is coming up, I don't know why this is here. But, so this is the existing condition that you can see, sorry, can't see that, let me move that over. So this is the existing condition that's in the, the intersection there where there's no left turn, but there's a U-turn that's, that's available here towards where this callout is. And what they're proposing is, and I'm sorry, it's not the same exact rendering, this is what was provided to me by Davie and what was provided to their homeowners associations that were in attendance, but if you notice, here, there is, right in this area here, there is no left turn proposed onto Volunteer from Sheridan Street. They discussed with the homeowners associations various issues that will be occurring. One is that there is a proposal or there is going to happen a, a transportation surtax project to widen Sheridan Street to three lanes each way. So that's going to, you know, the concerns are it's going to increase the speed of the vehicles traveling both east and westbound and the concerns about making that U-turn. So the questions were posed to the homeowners associations, if there's no improvements to that intersection and it's left as is and this widening of Sheridan Street is coming anyway, what do you propose? What do you want to do? The Davie Administrator saw that of the seven different homeowners associations that were present, four seemed to be in favor of, of an improvement to the intersections while three were not. But of the three, two were the largest HOAs that they, that were represented. So it's virtually a split of their population in that area that's going to be affected. And, you know, he basically asked them, well, you know, we need to be aware of what could happen here if we don't do any kind of improvements, what fallback plans do you want to have as far as a U-turn? So just wanted to bring that to your attention, but at this point, what's proposed at this point right now is no left turn onto northbound Volunteer Road.
Russell, how does this compare? What's the difference between this and the current state?
Okay, so if we go back to the original, this is the existing condition. So there's, there's, it's basically essentially the same except that there is a widening and there's also a, an improved signalization at the intersection here. Here.
Yeah, it's going to allow for two-way traffic on the south side of that intersection, which that does not allow for now.
Right. And what they've also committed, what they've also committed is that there would note, would not be any northbound traffic allowed from the dealership to travel northbound onto Volunteer Road as well. So you would have to make either a right turn or, I'm sorry, only a right turn, I believe, from the, from the dealership there.
Russell, are they widening Volunteer?
There's no proposal to widen Volunteer. That was not discussed.
They're going to use the existing pavement if they can figure.
Right, right. The only thing that was discussed of widening was the widening of Sheridan Street, three lanes each way.
Russell, was there any discussion that you can recall that was discussed that if there was as, in opposition to what the council had voted and, in opposition to what Sunshine Ranches had voted, if there was an option for a lane to turn directly onto Volunteer, that, that additional traffic cannot be undone, that once that is done, there is no way to go back.
Right.
Was there any discussion of that issue that you can recall?
When you say the turn onto Volunteer, are you talking about from westbound Sheridan Street?
Correct, correct.
There wasn't really any talk, I mean, there was some discussion about it from some of the HOAs, but nothing from Davie Administration. There was no support to do any improvements to that, like a D cell lane or anything like that. There were various, you know, ideas floated around. They talked about a protected U-turn here at this intersection down here that would allow for a left turn, a left green arrow that would allow people to make the U-turn only with a left turn and then also it would turn green and allow additional people to turn if, but obviously only if it was clear to do so. So they talked about that as well.
Because I do, and, and jumping off of that issue, I, I read the police reports and there was not one single accident attributed to that U-turn in, as long as the records had went back. And that was really, really important and it's, I can only see it going badly if they were to allow a westbound direct turn onto Volunteer Road, especially if there, there is an obstruction on I-75 and they have to send that northbound traffic onto Sheridan, it's going to dump right onto Volunteer. And I mean, a lot of people will be adversely affected from Lou Ray to Mustang to Sunset to even where Keith lives, all the way down.
So, okay, go for it. So was there any talk about next steps for the Davie?
Yes, thanks for the question. So they, I did ask that we be kept in the loop on any next steps. They are not going to have any further community meetings about the issue, they've had two. What they discussed was that the next steps would be that they would bring it to a council meeting and have, the public would have their opportunity to discuss it at that meeting. I did ask representatives from Davie Administration to keep us in the loop and inform us of when that was going to take place, that we could send the contingent there if we wanted to and, and be represented. They committed to doing that as well.
I would like to be notified of that, please.
Absolutely. As soon as we are made aware, we will certainly let you know.
And, and just one quick question, so, and then ultimately, who makes the decision?
The county.
On this? When we say the county, who, who in the county makes the decision? Is it, is it, I don't think it's a commission, it's probably a Broward.
It's Tornese's group, it's not actually Richard Tornese, but it's his group. It's under the Highway Engineering Department.
Right, okay.
Mayor, I just want to put in two things, just so you know, I was, I've, we've been monitoring this for a very long time now, which is how we knew about it, okay? Davie shocked us a little bit by supporting it, but then we went out and did our homework with our neighboring residents, Ivanhoe, Ivanhoe Estates and those areas, as you went on into the different Davie communities as well, and garnered support for not doing it to the chagrin of Davie who was a little bit upset that we got support against it. So they reach out to the community, their community, to basically, in my opinion, sway their minds to try to get it, but that vote was not there in terms of, there's not a mass public support to do it. We have spoken to Mayor Geller's office and others at the county, they're well aware of our opposition, so even if Davie comes back and says we're okay with this, our opposition is so noted on the record that we still have political abilities to kill it regardless of what Davie does, because it impacts us more than it impacts Davie, no matter what. In addition to that, I, I spoke to Andy earlier in this week, I was on a phone call with the county earlier in this week, and the Sheridan widening project is happening sooner than people may believe and, and it's actually going to be procured in the first quarter of 2022 to go on to the street for the program management and then for the construction. So they're anticipating this project to start next year. And, and so the final thing I want to note, while Councilmember Kozinski is a hundred percent correct that there did not appear to be, you know, any traffic violations, accidents, et cetera, at that U-turn, the biggest concern now is that they're increasing it by two more lanes. So, and that's why that U-turn becomes even more something to look at in how it's being designed because of the new amount of traffic that will be coming onto that roadway.
You know, I would, I would challenge that because the U-turn really has nothing to do with the number of lanes going that direction. to do with the number of lanes going that direction. It has to do with the number of lanes on Volunteer Road. I mean, that's, that's what people are making the U-turn for, is to make a U-turn there and then go north on Volunteer, which should be about the same amount as it is, as it is today.
That is, but you'll have three lanes heading the other direction to try to avoid, which is why they're looking at that light and other.
Yeah, yeah, and you can handle that way. But I think from a traffic count standpoint, I wouldn't expect it, so.
I've got a quick question that's slightly off-topic. You'd mentioned that they're, both of you had mentioned that they're planning on widening Sheridan. I hadn't heard that before. What segments? What's the scope of the widening?
It's from, I'm sorry. Vice Mayor, it is from Flamingo Road to basically I-75 interchange.
Okay, so it's not coming further west than that, past Lowe's or out to 172nd?
Not at this.
Not yet.
Okay, not yet, right. Right, okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I mean, sounds like they've got a split there to just stay out of it, to me.
They certainly are split.
Good job, good job, good job, Russell. Thank you.
All right.
And that's all I had, that's all I had for my report, Mayor, other than I wish you all happy Thanksgiving.
Yep, thank you, Andy. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
The two additional lanes, how is that going to impact the wetlands area that is right there? Is it, are the two lanes going to be to the north side of what is existing Sheridan? Or is it going to be one lane and one lane to the south? Does anyone know what that's going to be yet? Are they gonna add the two lanes to the north?
I haven't seen the plans yet, but generally speaking, for a road like that, they already have the right of ways, and there're probably not wetlands on those right of ways, because they probably already maintain them. But I have not seen it. If it, if it looks differently, we, we can definitely get the plans out there when we see them.
Well, now by polling here, it's a very narrow piece before you're into someone's property.
Right. All right. Item number 10. Ordinance, Russell?
Yes, Mayor, this is an ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, amending the comprehensive plan by adding a new property rights element, providing for transmittal to the State Land Planning Agency and other review agencies defined in Florida Statute 163.3184, subsection 1C, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, page 19, we need to update, if you want to amend that motion.
I'll amend the motion.
Well, what's, why don't you?
Actually, I'll withdraw.
Yeah, you haven't, we haven't made a motion yet, so.
Well, it's page 19, number 10.
But, that's okay.
No, it's 19, it's 19, number 10.
I'll withdraw.
It's the census thing.
Yeah, right. What do you got, Gary?
It's the second reading item, buddy.
I may have hit the wrong one.
Yeah, that's item 11, which is, item 11 is the carryover from the LPA.
Sorry, item 11, I'm sorry.
Withdraw?
There you go.
One too many.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, I jumped one too many. I apologize. I'll second.
All right, so we got a motion and a second to approve this item number 10. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item? Seeing none, Russell, if you can please call the question?
Certainly, Mayor, but just for the record, who made the motion to approve?
Uh, Vice Mayor and Councilman.
Okay. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes, 5-0.
An ordinance of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, adopting the five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2022-2026 pursuant to Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Mayor, this is the item that came before you with the recommendation of approval from the LPA, subject to a modification of the census being 2020 instead of 2010.
Which the council has to ignore as far as that amended motion, because, as you know, I was page flipping pretty furiously when Gary called that item out.
Yeah.
And yes, you're correct. It of course should be 2020, and it's one of about 1,500 things we have to update in the comp plan, but we can't update that, and we purposely didn't, now that I looked at it, because the only things we're allowed to update are the schedule of capital improvements. Otherwise, we have to send it up to Tallahassee and go through the whole process. And the portion that mentions the 2010 census is an adopted portion, which is the goals, objectives, and policies. It's outside the schedule of capital improvements and outside the data and analysis, so we don't have the ability to amend that without sending it up to the state. So we can do that if you want, or we can, like I said, it's gotta be updated along with hundreds of other things in the comp plan. We will.
And do we have a plan to do that?
Come back to that, yes.
Come back with all those? Okay.
Yeah, the comp plan board is starting that process now.
So we should just leave it the way it is?
Just leave it the way it is, yeah.
Sure.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on this item?
This is about exactly what Jeff just said.
Who are you?
But?
Who are you?
Who was that man?
New Hallingsworth, 199th Avenue. Okay, this is, goes back to what he was saying. The conferency plan was supposed to be reviewed by the conferency plan board this year, which is now over. Because of all of the ordinances the council gave to the comp plan, there was no discussion whatsoever to review it. We, I know, and those that have been on the board before and have been, that have been with the board, know that things get outdated. And we want to go through, the last time we did it, seven years ago, we rewrote the plan basically from scratch and put all the things that had changed within it. And that was a major undertaking. This time, we wanted to go through and take care of all of the scriber's errors, all of the dates, try and make those on a continuing basis, saying like, every bicentennial, this will be done, et cetera, et cetera. And get rid of the dates and stuff that has to be changed every year, or every 10 years, or five years, or whatever we say. So it can be a more rolling document. We only have to take a look at what the big things are then, instead of all these little things. I hope that this next conferency plan board will be able to find the time to go through it page by page, because it is a very large document, not as large as when we got it from the county the first time, which was about four foot high. And so I hope that, you know, you'll understand that we need to have, the conferency plan board needs to have the time to do the work that it's mandated to do. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. All right, please call the question, Russell.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Item number 12, resolution.
Item number 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $46,800.00 with Craven Thompson and Associates for professional services for the southwest 185th Way and southwest 63rd Street drainage improvements, authorizing the execution of the purchase order and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you.
Motion to approve?
Thank you. So the items 12 through 15, we'll vote on them individually separately, but they are all capital projects in town. Rod, I'm wondering if maybe you can just, just for the record, people that are listening in or watch this later, maybe you can just kind of give us an overview.
Mayor?
Yes.
If you don't mind, if Rod's gonna do this, let's read all those items into the record, and then he can address them all in one comment, and then you just vote on each one.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Yeah, and you'll need a motion for each one, but at least then he can address all of them. Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Certainly. Okay, so item 13 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $17,000.00 with Craven Thompson and Associates to complete the surveying services for the Country Estates Drainage and Water Quality Improvement Project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date. Item number 14 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $45,635.00 with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., to complete the civil engineering services for the Country Estates Drainage and Water Quality Improvement Project, authorizing the town administrator to execute the purchase order and providing an effective date. Item number 15 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a purchase order in the amount of $55,275. So, I'm sorry, $270.00 with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, Inc., for professional services for the next phase of the transportation surface and drainage ongoing rehabilitation or Tisdor roadway improvements, authorizing the execution of the purchase order, approving a budget amendment to the fiscal year 2021 through 2022 town budget and providing an effective date.
Mayor, if we could have a motion that would carry on for items 13, 14, and 15, we'll record it that way, then you can debate them all.
Okay.
Motion?
Make a motion to approve item 13, 14, and 15.
Second.
Second all of those?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, these are just examples of projects, capital projects, we have coming up in this new fiscal year. One of them being the southwest 185th Way and 63rd Street Drainage Improvements. It's essentially, it's a conveyance system we have already in place. We're just proposing to improve it, because a lot of it is overland swales, and they're not overly effective. So we're just gonna add some structures. We're gonna put some piping and basically add another connection for it to go east and west. Then the other project is the Country Estates, which is, again, another example of a capital project, where we're gonna do some surveying services in Frontier Trails Park, and we're proposing to do some drainage improvements in there to be able to move water away from some of those areas that there's significant ponding there. And then the last one, number 15, is the re-up of the King Study that we have for Tisdor. So it's that new analysis with new data, and we're gonna get a new schedule based off of what we have left for Tisdor.
Perfect, excellent. Thank you. Perfect. I think a lot of times, you know, we run through these pretty quickly, and they all kind of sound the same, but I think it's important for, you know, the public to kind of see that this, these are all improvements that are going on in the town for drainage, which is really important to our town. So, all right. Is there any discussion on any of these items from the council? Seeing none, is there any public discussion on these items? Yeah, Debbie?
Debbie Green, 199th Avenue.
Thanks.
I just, I don't know if this is the time, but I just wanted to also commend Rod, because although the notification, the letters came out of the work gonna be done, they were delayed, like, they came just a couple days before they actually started the work. But when I got my letter, and my neighbors and some had asked me questions, so I emailed Rod right away, and I have to tell you, he's been very responsive. He came out, and it's just, it's very helpful, whether you can have those meetings ahead of time, in some way, because to hear from Rod what's being done and why it's being done, it helps to take away all the rumors and all the, why is this being done, that being done, because on our street, when we had that huge flood, our yards were flooded, but our street was dry.
Yeah, yeah.
So it just, everyone was like, why are they doing this? Why is this? And it was just, he's been very responsive and very helpful.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for bringing that up. We are fortunate. We've got a great engineer, does a great job, but also has great skills communicating to our residents. So thank you, Rod. Appreciate it. All right, seeing no further public comment, so how are we voting on?
We were just debating that. If it's gonna be the same vote, someone can say, I'd like to vote on all by 12, 13, 14, and 15, and we'll record it for each item. So.
Is there anybody that would, is there anybody that would like to vote on these individually? Seeing none, I think we can vote on them together.
Okay. Save my vocal cords, thank you. Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Is it a simple yes, or a yes to 12, 13, 14, and 15?
You did it both ways.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Now on item 16.
Item number 16 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing to join with the state of Florida and other local government units as a participant in the Florida Memorandum of Understanding and Formal Agreements, implementing a unified plan for the allocation and use of prospective settlement dollars from opioid-related litigation, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
We have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. I think this is, you know, this is really more of an administrative type of item, that we want to be able to participate. Anything, Keith?
You're absolutely correct. This is, if we pass this resolution, we get a share of the revenue collected from the opioid settlement. That's it.
Great.
I do have a question.
Sure, good.
Would this funding go, say, if we have a transition home in the town and law enforcement was called to resolve an issue that was complained about or necessitated the calling of law enforcement to that facility and the expenses for those public service dollars, would that be, could that be like incorporated and brought in? Like, that would be part of our claim, saying, hey, we had to expend this money because of the transition home and the individuals transitioning off of opioids and residing in our town and necessitated the law enforcement to come out?
Yeah, I mean, Marty might be able to answer that better than I can. My understanding is that indirectly, the answer is yes. Directly, probably the answer is no. You know, it would come out of our general funds, this would go into our general funds, so it certainly would offset that, but I don't think it would be specifically allocated for it. Is that?
I don't think it's for true purposes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's generally.
And answers.
Section 1. I do have a question about this. I wasn't clear on how they're gonna calculate our fair share. Keith?
I'm sorry.
I'm not sure if you're aware, and I couldn't find it in here, but is there any methodology described that, on how they're gonna calculate our fair share?
The MOU has what the funds should be utilized for.
I understand that.
There's no methodology yet, because it's going to the county. There's no doubt in my mind it's gonna be based on population.
That's what I'm thinking, but, okay.
Correct. But that has not been announced by Broward County yet, but it's been intimated in the five meetings that I've sat in on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, public item, comment closed. Russell?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you.
Item number 17 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town council meeting schedule for the calendar year 2022 and providing for an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Doesn't it feel like we just did this?
I know.
Yeah, it is.
Every year. Each year it comes up faster and faster. I don't know. All right, any council comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Public comment closed. I think we're good, Russell.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 18, Mayor, is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the town holiday schedule for the calendar year 2022 and providing an effective date.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Almost didn't get a second on that one. I don't know.
No holidays.
This is one of my favorite items each year.
Yes, day after Thanksgiving is your favorite one.
Yeah. Any, any council comment on this item? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Russell?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Um, yeah.
Mayor Brightcrus?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item number 19 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, appointing Councilmember Blank as the new Vice Mayor of the town of Southwest Ranches and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Didn't mean to scare you.
No, we're good.
Thank you. I'd like to speak on this if I could.
Absolutely.
When I picked... When I picked up my agenda book a week ago, I read through the resolutions and this one got my attention a little more than the others. And I am speaking for myself. Being a newly elected council member, and it's been a year ago tonight that we were sworn in, I've learned a tremendous amount about the workings of the town, but I've got a lot more to learn. So when I read this resolution and I inserted my name into that slot right there, I felt a little uneasy about that. I did, I felt a little uneasy. So by saying that, I feel we should appoint a council member who has a lot more knowledge with his 11 years of service as a council member. And with that, I'd like to place the name of Councilmember Jablonsky in nomination for vice mayor.
I would second that.
And I'll third it.
It would be my honor.
We don't, we don't have to flip a coin for it?
Nope. Coin flops over.
Awesome, no, absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Albritton.
Thank you.
I think that's a great choice. All right.
We need to vote if that's.
Yes, I think, let's, let's get an official, so you made the motion?
Motion, yes.
Who seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, we got it, all right. Any council, any, yeah, council comment on that further? Any public comment on it? Seeing none.
Thank you, Mayor.
Russell?
Okay, this is where I always get it screwed up because now I got to remember he's, he's Vice Mayor Jablonsky. All right, Council, Councilmember Albritton? True, okay. Councilmember Jablonsky? Leave it to the lawyer to point that out.
Steve, don't get sick. Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hartman?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
For the last time.
Yes.
Good job, Bob.
Great job.
Thank you. Congrats, Gary.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right, item number 20.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a year-end budget adjustment for the fiscal year 2020 through 2021 budget and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Marty, it's all yours.
Good evening, Mayor and new vice mayor. Welcome. Tonight's year-end budget adjustment reflects necessity in accordance with state statute and our town, on our town charter. I'm happy to report that none of our five funds, now the fiscal year we're talking about is last year, fiscal year 21, that goes from October 1st, 20 to 9/30/21, and I'll give you a little fun or important information. The fact is that none of the five funds exceeded their appropriation and the five funds being the general fund, the transportation fund, the capital projects fund, our debt service fund, or our solid waste funds. In addition to that, our component, special component unit, which is the Southwest Ranches Volunteer Fire Rescue, Inc., the 501(c)(3), also for the ninth year in a row, the budgeted expenditures did not exceed their appropriation. So that's wonderful. So tonight, there is a little cleanup we have to do on Exhibit A, which is on your page 121 out of 151. I gave a summary recap because of the six funds, there are two funds that we do have to do customary cleanup on a line item basis. And along with that, rather than go individual line item, we could open it up for questions if you should have, but I wanted to point out that as at this juncture, there we expect at least a $757,167 surplus from fiscal year 21 that will carry over to 22. And a lot of that, you're aware of, in the fact of the lean recovery, was approximately $500,000. I'm rounding up numbers now and we'll go into the individual line items if you have any questions. There's that $500,000 in excess of our lean recoveries through our code enforcement and legal departments last year, and $300,000 is primarily due to our record building permitting throughout the entire town for last year. You can see on the gross up of $2 million in terms of building permitting fees, that includes both portions, the 75 to 25 regulatory fees. The first time ever that the town has ever exceeded $2 million in gross building permit fee revenue. So the, at this juncture, we're showing the surplus of $757,167. And also, as it relates to the capital projects fund, we had one line item capital project as it relates to our fire, public safety, modular expenses. They were emergency expenditures. We need to transfer $22,107 from the general fund to the capital projects fund to cover that emergency expenditure that we've incurred to date as of last year. Along with that, in accordance with the council communication, I just wanted to point out, as it relates to our COVID-19 and CARESAC expenditures for the year, the town has recovered nearly 100% of our COVID expenditures for last year, which represents about $100,000, specifically $95,053 to date. There's more potential that we can recover from, but only for fiscal year 21, it's the $95,053. And I'm happy to report, we have already received approximately $2 million of a $4 million ARPA expenditures, and that will be an item that we're going to be revisiting with you, Andy, and Russell as to eligibility for expenditures for next year. So that money's in the bank and we're earning interest, interest on it until we spend it, and that will also flow directly to fund balance. We don't have to return that in the meantime. So I'll open it up the floor to any of you if you have any individual questions as it relates to any of the individual line items. There were five departments that required adjustments and it was primarily due to cost recovery as it relates to lower-than-budgeted expenditures. As, as what I mentioned, the building department far exceeded estimates that we anticipated. So back to you guys, if you have any questions for me, this is wonderful and we'll be able to use that surplus in later years, how you choose, including we're anticipating the cameras throughout the town, a large portion of that. So I'll turn it back to you.
Perfect, thank you, Marty. Really appreciate your work on this and I know it's a team effort in the finance department, so please pass on those thanks to, to the team. Great job. Any questions or comments for Marty on this?
No, I just have a general comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, this is like really fantastic, basically bottom lining it, we got a $1.3 million surplus. I mean, you know, this is like chocolate cake. What's not to like on this? Everybody came in, you know, the whole team worked together, legal, financial, administrative, the whole, you know, we got the whole enchilada. And it's, it's really, it's really great because I know we're going to have a tough year next year with solid waste and fire fees and things like that. So I haven't started the list yet, so don't anybody panic. Please. I got a couple of months yet to work on it. So, but no, kidding aside, you know, we're probably going to be needing those funds, you know, in the, for future, future things that we're going to have to, contracts that we're going to have to renegotiate and stuff. So, yeah, we're in a great position financially, which is really good. Thank you, Marty. Outstanding work. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Gary. Any other comments from the council? Any public comments on this item? Seeing none, yeah, I just echo basically Gary what you said. I, I think that in this town, we're downright spoiled at this point because we've got a great team in place and as you said, it, it transitions, it's, it's the whole, the whole enchilada, as you said, you know, all, all the teams are working together, different departments, the administration, the finance, and.
Legal.
Legal. All of it, all of it's clicking, all of it's working, and, and we're very fortunate to have that in place so that we can get these kinds of reports out. So thank you all for that. All right, I think we're ready for, call the question, Russell?
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number 21.
Item number 21 is a resolution of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida amending resolution number 2014-054 to establish a revised comprehensive fee schedule for development and permit review fees and providing an effective date.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any council comment on this item?
None.
No. Any public comment on this item? Yeah. Yeah.
Noel Hollisworth, 199th Avenue.
Thank you.
Okay. On the fee schedule that you have there on, on your document, can we please, instead of saying like $531.92, round it up to either a solid dollar or a $5 bill so the fee schedules are, look easier? Writing a check for the pennies is, you know, I think insane. So if it's like a standard dollar, raise everything up from the pennies to the next dollar, no matter what it is. So I know we try to say that it's the exact cost of what it is, but having that seems silly. So let's round it up to the dollar or the $5 bill.
Noel, you know this money doesn't go to us.
What?
It doesn't go to the town.
I know that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Just, I would disagree with Noel. Fiscal conservative, fiscal conservatism, you know, we're going to just strap our residents as minimally as possible for these permit fees and that's what I stand for.
Yep.
Only talking about one fee.
There's only one fee.
Yeah.
This is the clearing fee.
And it's nine cents off from being a round number, so.
I, I just want to make this clear because Russell called me about this item a couple of weeks ago and so did Julio. The last item is the only thing that's changing or being added to this. That item had always been charged by the town, but there was no documentation on why it was charged. So the items before you, just to clarify that that item is an official charge. So maybe it should have been underlined to show that's the only addition, but that is the only change on this entire list is that last item.
Landscaping.
The landscaping and irrigation item.
The 340.
Question on this. I'm wondering, when was the last time we went out and, and did a survey to see whether these are still competitive, if they're still in alignment with some of our, our neighbors and what we would expect?
I can't tell you, Mayor, when that was done, which does suggest to me that we may be due.
Yeah.
And then we could use round numbers.
Yeah, I, I think, I think because that's not an uncommon complaint that comes up, I think it would be good to kind of put that on our, on our things to do list and, you know, the next, it's not an urgent item, obviously.
Certainly during 2022.
Yeah.
Be appropriate.
That would be perfect. Perfect, good, thank you. All right, I think, Russell, if you can please call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Hartman?
Yes.
Councilmember Kozinski?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, item number 22, we've got four different minutes that are listed there. Does anybody?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one correction.
Before we get there, do we have a second to?
A second.
Okay, go ahead, David.
Page 139 of 151, into the third paragraph where it discusses Councilmember Kozinski's comments, go into the third line out of my comments where it says that a friend from law school recently passed, I'd like to insert away from this virus.
What page is this? I think it said it was on page 139?
39 of 151.
Oh, of 151.
139 of 151.
Oh, okay, I got it.
I'm in the wrong chapter.
Hold on a second.
Where is that already updated?
It is, it is the third paragraph and it is the.
Third line. Near the end.
What, what change do you want to make?
Just add the word away.
Away, add the word away.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I'll amend my motion to include that.
Okay, does that can agree with that? For the amended?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further corrections, comments on the minutes? Any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, Russell, if you can please call the question.
Councilmember Albritton?
Yes.